Since it's past the time to start, we'll go ahead and get started. President Berryman comes along, he'll be able to take over and mop up for what I don't do. Roll call please, Gina, or whoever.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Dr. Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Un.
Thank you.
President James Berryman.
Public comments, does anyone want to address the board? Or do we have any of these public comments requests? Jeff Snow, please.
Good morning, Directors. Jeff Snow with CRNR Environmental Services and the Waste Not OC Coalition. CRNR has formalized a partnership with the Waste Not OC Coalition founded by Orange County's top public health official, Dr. Eric Handler, and the OC Food Bank. And while the Costa Mesa Sanitary District is the absolute founding partner in recycling organic waste, there is a higher and better use for some of the food waste that's generated throughout the county, and that is in helping to end food insecurity. We think of Orange County as affluent, but we have 400,000 of our citizens who are defined as food insecure, not having the means to acquire the nutrition that they need. So, in a very simple connection of resources, the Waste Not OC Coalition works with a broad group of partners to divert edible wholesome food waste from dumpsters and redistribute it to over 200 food pantries throughout the county, including one of the largest in Costa Mesa, Share Ourselves. The Waste Not OC Coalition is hopeful that we will partner with all 34 jurisdictions in Orange County to be the leaders in this waste diversion strategy and this ending hunger strategy. And we do believe, and I personally believe with great conviction, that we can and will end hunger forever in the county of Orange within the next five years through the growth of these partnerships. Legislation SB 1383 does require food recovery, that a minimum of 20% of all edible food be recovered for highest and best purposes, which is feeding people. So, we look forward to formalizing our partnership with the Costa Mesa Sanitation District in this food recovery. It is not residential food, so there are some limitations on what the district will be able to do, but we certainly hope that we can have the district's support and endorsement in encouraging donations from the district's supermarkets, restaurants, and institutions who routinely throw away edible food where it ends up in landfills and creates methane pollution. That aside, I'd like to announce that we have officially named the anaerobic digestion facility in Paris, that is now called Roar. And Roar stands for Regional Organics Anaerobic Recovery. And while it's not firm, we are hopeful that we will be hosting a very large Earth Day celebration this year. Earth Day every year occurs on April 22nd, which this year is a Monday. It does follow Easter Sunday, so there may be some date flexibility required. We have a soft commitment from Governor Gavin Newsom to attend that, and in a shameless, shameless theft of intellectual property from Director Schaefer, I've taken the Back to the Future analogy that he's used, and we hope to have the actual Back to the Future DeLorean on site.
I remember the movie, Jeff, that's the only reason I can...
So, upon further cementing of arrangements, we will send invitations and are very hopeful that the board can attend. Thank you for letting me exceed my three minutes.
I have a question.
You have a question, too?
Where would it be?
It will be at the Roar facility in Paris, California.
Paris, okay.
What type of food should you take out of the dumpsters that's eatable?
Pardon, sir?
What type of food do you take out of the dumpsters that's eatable?
We don't take anything once it's hit the dumpster. The idea is, yeah, Waste Not OC Coalition will provide freezer bags if you've ever had like in a food delivery service. We provide those to the restaurateurs or sanitary carts to supermarkets, and that edible food is never mixed with the waste stream. It's all pre-consumer, and again, perfectly good and wholesome, but an average Albertson's or Ralphs will throw away as much as 12 tons of edible food a week. That feeds a lot of people.
One other question, if I could. Are there any markets in Costa Mesa that you're dealing with right now?
Yes. Our partners at Second Harvest Food Bank are handling all of the Albertsons, and I'm not real familiar with other markets you have, but there are our lowest paying fruit because they're such large generators of edible food waste that they don't sell.
Mr. Vice President, that was the information, I've spoken about it at the last board meeting. Jeff and the group made a presentation at the Orange County Council of Governors meeting last month, and I've given Gina some information. I would ask staff if we could maybe have it on the next study session, a little presentation from them. It's, Jeff and I were talking before the meeting, it's so simple, it's scary. I mean, it's such a simple solution to give food to people that I would wholeheartedly support our district taking a lead role in this and getting the information out. So, Scott, if we could do that maybe at the next planning session, have a short presentation on it?
Sure. We welcome the opportunity.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I feel it's important because we have SOS right here, or they're in need all the time, so I think this is fantastic, and I'd go along with Director Schaefer.
Well, I think we should partner with the city in addition, because as I walk the neighborhoods and I see a lot of food establishments, people coming and getting the food, you know, already, lawns and the Oriental Market, Oriental is probably the wrong word, but Market by McDonald's on Harper, I mean, there's people there parked every day, you know, getting stuff that is probably going to SOS.
Well, it's going to Second Harvest, they make first.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and so, the city has the, has a lot of contact with, you know, food markets would be, and probably some jurisdiction over there.
Yeah, yeah, in that they have to get their permits from, in order to do that.
Director, my father uses the term Oriental, and I say Dad, we say Asian these days.
I know, I'm just thinking about my wife. Luckily, she's not here, she would have jumped up and she'd...
He's probably, he's probably as old as your dad, so definitely.
Also, we might consider on the study session having this, but also the part that maybe you get some of these container bags type of thing, and have it here at the office, just like we did the flags and things, where people could come up and receive that, and you know, they're able to get it.
They're mainly businesses, and so...
Whatever.
Yeah.
And with the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, we could help.
Wonderful idea, we can have information packets here at the district and some of the containers for people that want to do it. But with a formal partnership, Waste Not OC will provide outreach consultants in the district to work face to face, much like our sustainability coordinator.
Okay, I'm on a committee with the Chamber of Commerce, with government people, and this would be great, I can introduce them at the next meeting if I get some information.
I think it's important to remember, though, that this is a commercial venture that they're talking about. We don't want to diminish our residents from contributing to our organics cart, and I think it's also important to remember, like you were saying, this is edible food, it's not waste, it's not leftovers, it's food that can be used right away.
I have one other question, Jeff. Have you guys considered school districts? Because after, to deal with the school districts for the food that they espers at the end of lunchtime.
Absolutely, and we are pleased to share that all but one of the school districts in Orange County is now a Waste Not OC Coalition member. And in an interesting twist, we're all using ride-sharing services, Uber and Lyft, so a great company called Yellow Cab has a lot of excess capacity. So, Yellow Cab is now picking up edible food from the schools because their drivers are bonded and insured and helping to deliver that, and they're providing a greatly discounted fare to Waste Not OC, and that fare is being paid for by U.S. Foods and Cisco Foods, who are the two largest food providers and partners to the Waste Not OC Coalition. So, it's really an unprecedented collaboration of competitors and different organizations that are making this work on a grand scale. Last September, our model was recognized in Washington DC at the Capitol, Congressman Lou Correa presented it, and it's been recognized as the leading model in the United States. State of Mississippi, Counties of Ventura, Riverside, and San Diego are all contracting with our nonprofit for consulting, but we really want to complete our mission here in Orange County first.
Thank you, I think, you know, it is a good item for the next study sessions.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you.
Are you, do you want to address anything? I have your card here that says C-4, C-A-N-I.
Yeah, that was your agenda, I think it'd be most efficient, I think, to have it there.
Okay. Just trying to figure that out. I've been asked to move item number eight to number one, and item number seven to number two. If the board has no problem with that, I think it'll be fine.
I was thinking the same thing.
So, let's start off with wastewater service boundaries between Costa Mesa Sanitary and the city in Newport Beach.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Also, I want to inform the board, we just have, we just received the message that President Berryman is on the way right now, so people can be there in a few minutes. So, thank you, Mr. Vice President and Board Directors. This item is regarding some cleanup, that staff has been working with the city in Newport Beach for over a year, cleaning up our wastewater service down between the district and the city in Newport Beach. And your Gina package is a detailed staff report, it kind of gives you a background of this issue and our recommendation, but in a nutshell, you know, it really goes back 57 years ago when the city and the district entered agreements where there are some certain properties that are located outside our service area, but the wastewater flows into our system, which eventually goes to OCSC's facility for treatment. The latest agreement was 1979, that expired over, you know, 20 years ago, and since then, we've had so-called a gentleman's agreement where we would still bill the city for those capacity charges if they would pay us for those fees. As I mentioned, we've been collaborating with the city staff for over a year now, and I'm going to say LACCO staff as well, to clean up the boundaries where we would annex most of the properties from their service area so that we can assess their, assess for their wastewater services. I'm going to turn it over to George Murdock, who is a former city employee, he was the employee I was working with when this guy started. He recently retired, he's now working for Brady Consultants, who was hired by the city to resolve this one issue, to get this issue resolved, that was top of his priority, so I'm going to turn it over to him. I also wanted to mention that, Mr. Murdock, while he used to, his role has changed a little bit, he used to be a policy influencer, he is now a policy creator. He's now a board director, he was appointed board director of the East Orange County Water District, so he's now one of your fellow board members. So, I'm aware of George, and we have a presentation for you.
Well, thank you, good morning, I'm George Murdock, Scott said. So, the hat today I'm wearing is through Richard Brady and Associates, they do water and wastewater consulting services. I, as Scott said, I retired at the end of 2017, did nothing for six months, and then decided to do something silly and run for the East Orange County Water District Board and won. So, I am now a board member of that district, and we provide the sewer and water services for Tustin, Orange, and incorporated San Antonio. But today, my hat is Richard Brady and Associates, and I know you've received some detailed reports, but I thought maybe I could skim through this. This is something that we were aware of in Newport Beach for many years, as Scott had mentioned, there was several agreements in place, and it's time to fix this. So, the city brought me back, pretty much because I have the experience and the stuff that, you know, we've been talking about over the years. So, with that, I'll just skim through some things, please stop me if you have any questions. So, it's, you know, you and the city Newport Beach, of course, provides sewer services to the residents in Newport Beach, as you already know, and as Scott said, there were many agreements even going back to the 1960s. So, as residential tracks were built, you'll see later in some slides, that it was more cost-effective to connect to the Costa Mesa Sanitary District because some pump stations need to be built, there was some sewer mains that need to be built, and so when they weighed that, I found a study in the early 60s that said, well, why don't we just connect to the district, we'll enter into some agreement that you would take the capacity. And so, that stayed in place for, and it has been ever since. As Scott said, the existing agreement did expire, but the city has continued to pay for most of the properties that were in the 1979 agreement, and I'll point those out. We've been, as Scott said, we've been working on this for some time. Ah, wait, yeah, there. Okay, so this is an overview, really, if you look at the, I'm kind of a point guy, so I'll try to show you, but this is an overview of the properties we're talking about in the upper Newport Bay. The blue properties are the ones that were part of the 1979 agreement, to some extent. There's a couple of corrections that have happened since, but this, these are the ones that the city is currently paying the district to provide sewer capacity. The purple dash line is the service boundary of your district, and this was something that we worked with LACCO for some time, because there were some questions on exactly where, what property line the existing boundary was from previous agreements and other things. The green properties that you'll see on Mesa Drive, we'll talk about this in more detail, but these are properties that were developed, most of the ones on Mesa Drive when they were first constructed were all septic systems. There's a city ordinance that said that if you're going to build a building, you have to connect to a public sewer, so residents were forced to do that. The city doesn't have any sewer mains up in that area, so they constructed and they connected to you guys. There's a little section in there that you see is gray, those are homes that are on Mesa Drive are connected to you, and you are charging a fee. So, quite a bit of analysis on, into this. So, I'll kind of touch on the areas, please stop me if you have any questions. There we go. So, this is what they call Track 3801, this is all Irvine Avenue, and the original, this is the one that we found that when the developer was building these homes up in the upper part of the West River, the sewer was flowing the wrong way, and so they would have to build a pump station and some sewer mains to get it back into the city system. So, this is prompted the agreement for these properties. The city does charge these residents a sewer service fee, they do maintain the laterals, and in this exhibit, the little red is, line is lateral between sewer main and property, and then the city maintains the sewer mains all throughout the residential community, and then the sewer connects to Irvine Avenue where it now becomes the Costa Mesa Sanitary Conveyance System. So, originally in agreement, again, we don't need to get into the weeds, but originally in agreement, it's like the 164 properties, we know why, they were being built, about 154, because there was real, a lot of discrepancy in the mapping system. This is where we first started, and like, wow, you know, the, we're charging, we're paying for services, where the sewer's flowing the wrong way. So, we had our engineering staff and our operations staff go out there and actually pop manholes, do some TV, check the flows, dig up some models, and to find exactly 99 properties that are actually flowing. So, this is, it's okay, it's just that we want to make sure that we're talking apples apples, and we've identified the exact properties.
Is that near Master Circle?
It's on the east side of Costa Mesa, east side of Irvine Avenue, we're on the west side there, that is 22nd Street there, right?
Oh.
If I can get this, if I can get this to go back.
Okay, now I understand.
It's this little property here, here's the Upper Bay, or Newport Bay.
Okay, now I get it. Thank you.
Sure. So, the next one here is the Harper Christian Church, and this one here, the purple line, as I said earlier, is the Costa Mesa Sanitary Sewer Service Boundary defined by LACCO. And you can see that that blue property now sits in the city's, Newport Beach's sphere of influence, so it becomes the city's service area. It doesn't give you the ability to charge them, they are physically connected to a sewer main on Tustin Avenue, which is just left of the property. And the city doesn't have any sewer connections up anywhere, or sewer mains anywhere in that area. So, this is one that the city had agreed to pay the Costa Mesa Sanitary District a annual fee to take them, but again, physically connected. And some of these are difficult because, again, the city would, could, or is responsible for the sewer lateral between the property and the sewer main, and yet, the sewer main isn't the city, so you can see why this might be a problem. The next one is Track 4444, and it, the association, I think, is 44s is what they call it, but this is a condominium association. Again, with this one, our research came up with that a developer came in, built the community, laid a sewer main around the community, flowed everything to it, but there was no way to get it to the city system. The developer is often would give the sewer main to the city, because it's within their service boundary, and say, here you go, you get to maintain it, and they have done ever since. The city does charge sewer fees for these properties. Mr. Motors asked me a question, which was, the red lines on this one, which are sewer laterals, go all the way to the building, but the city would maintain further code only between the sewer main and the property, but what happens often in these situations is there isn't a cleanout or a definite, definitive, you know, part where they would only be maintaining, so the city has identified where the lateral goes. And I'll do some more investigation on this, should you guys decide to go forward, we'll find out some more information on this.
George, can I ask a quick question? Earlier, you mentioned that in all of these affected residents, that the city Newport maintains the sewer lateral?
Yes.
Can you define that a little more for me?
Sure, so Newport's one of the odd systems where they actually own the sewer lateral that goes between the sewer main and the property line. So, if there is an issue, the city pays, replaces, maintains, videotapes, there's an ordinance that if you do construction, you install a cleanout, and that was done primarily to find, so they, there was a definite, you know, where they could go in and clean between the property line and the sewer main. Many attempts, we went to the city over the years to say, well, maybe we don't want to be in the sewer lateral business, but the residents have become accustomed to it, they know that if there's a problem in the lateral, they can call the city. There is a budget to maintain laterals, they do have dig-out agreements, so if there's a tree, for instance, on a property that is owned by the property owner and has damaged the sewer lateral, the property owner pays for the repairs, but if not, then the city pays for that. So, there's a slight difference in service there. Good and bad, I mean, you can have a sewer lateral and have it for 100 years and never have an issue. You could be in an area where there's a lot of trees and a lot of, you can have a lot of problems. The beach area and other areas where there's sand, typically, they don't have issues. So, that is, if that answers your question, that's just a...
It does, I, the tree root thing is obviously, I'm an insurance agent, I'll just say that in front, and I've had customers in the city of Newport, they've had tree root intrusion, they've had to replace laterals, and you guys specifically do not cover any tree or root intrusion that causes damage, correct?
If, if the tree is owned by the property owner, if you do any damage to the lateral, as a property owner, then you would be responsible.
Even, even a condo association, association people would technically be responsible. And just the whole maintenance of the laterals is pretty strange for, I don't know, you must be one of the only in the county that does that. So, that's, I guess I would have a question, is when we, when we become, Scott, when we become responsible, would we accept that lateral maintenance agreement that Newport has?
No, we would not.
So, the city of Newport would still be responsible for the laterals, even though we're charging for the service?
No, if they're, if they're annexing our property, the city has no responsibility anymore for those laterals.
And neither do we as a Sanitary District.
Correct.
So, those residents now have that burden put on them?
That's right.
Okay, that answers.
So, that is something that later on we'll talk about, the public outreach and communication of the benefits and the disadvantages of the annexation. You know, some laterals are only five feet from the curb, yeah, but some laterals are hundreds of feet.
And realistically, the biggest impact that these residents have is from tree roots. There's very, very few chances that that lateral's going to fail for any other reason.
Absolutely. And this is, this property in particular that we're talking about here is probably the one that would be the most problematic.
A church?
No, this is the...
Oh, 444, okay.
Where the condo, we need to reach out to the condominium association, we need to reach out to homeowners, would they accept that? Because the city's maybe been doing a lot of maintenance, maybe they won't. But this, the reason that this is on here is that this is a property that the city considers kind of an outlier, it's not connected to the main sewer system, it's, it's up in an area where the sewer service boundaries seem to go around it, and it's a potential. Again, this is up to you and the city council, if you choose to do it or not do it, this one can be easily added in or taken out. This one will become important as I talk about the next properties, because of that green sewer line where the sewer mains are, those become important. Step away from the mic. The sewer comes into this green line and then goes from a manhole here through an easement and connects, this is where your sewer main is. So, all the flow goes through here. Nothing comes out of Irvine Avenue, nothing comes out, everything flows this way. That becomes important because you'll, I'll talk about these connections, so this sewer main is city, and then as we talk about the other properties, you see, this could be a little bit confusing where you've got private going to city, going to district. Okay, so, so the next one, just next door, so if you look at the upper left there, that's the Track 4444. You'll recognize each property, it's the YMCA, and it was called the Bay Corporate Plaza, though I've been recently told it's not called that anymore, but those are the business, the business buildings at the very end of University Drive. When those were constructed, we don't know if they were septic or not, but the developer constructed private sewer lines, that's the green dash line. So, they put in their own sewer main, they maintain it, the city doesn't maintain it. The city had difficulty in charging fees, so these people are getting free sewer, and have been getting free sewer for, as far as we can tell. They don't, the city doesn't maintain a lateral, so it doesn't provide any sewer service to the property, but they connect to that manhole, and the city pays the sand district that annual fee for the capacity. So, for, for the city, this is problematic, not saying there isn't other solutions, but that's the current situation with this one. Again, you can see the sewer boundary just, is north of these properties, so they fell within the city sphere. The next one is across the street, and you'll know this, is the Muth Interrogative Center. This is owned by the county, they don't have, it's a big area and a big lot, the lines that we define are by the parcel, and that's owned and maintained by the county, but they only have the one building, it's the little red dot on the right side of the blue there. And again, that was a private sewer line that was constructed on their property to convey sewer over and connect to that same manhole. So, again, it's just the one building. This is probably the most problematic, and this is where I met your general manager and said, what do we do out here? So, this is Mesa Drive, so Mesa Drive didn't have any properties, it was on the fluff near the Newport Bay, it's just below that, and they had septic systems. So, you know, city's goal back in the early 80s was get everybody off septic, you can't be on septic, it's hurting bay water quality. So, they did that, and they passed an ordinance that if you're doing construction, you have to connect to a public sewer system. But Newport doesn't have any sewer mains on Mesa Drive. So, the ones, the blue one there was one of the first ones that connected, and the city decided to add that, that cost into the annual fee that was being sent to Newport to pay for that conveyance system, but Newport had no mechanism to charge these residents because, again, they don't maintain the lateral, they don't, especially on that blue one, because you saw it was going through some private property. The green ones have been developed since, and I have another exhibit later to show you what they look like. The gray in between Mesa Drive was defined by LACCO as the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Service Boundary, and they are paying you guys the assessment fee, the annual assessment fee. One of the questions that was asked, are they paying the Orange County Sanitation District? Yes, all but one of them, I think, here in the very end. We've done some research on those end parcels. We've done some research on those end parcels, which will clean it up. These exhibits were created early on in our study, in conversations going back and forth between your staff, to try and identify who's involved and what are the physical buildings. But you'll see later, when you talk about annexations, you really need to go to the parcel level. So we'll talk about that. So here's the overview that I was going to show you, so as you can see, there's, there are homes on nearly every parcel out here, and this is Mesa Drive, this is the same property we were just discussing. Large properties have quite a bit of sewer, nobody is on septic, which is good, but there's developments and properties on all of them. Some of the ones at the end, so we found a span across where the property owner had bought four parcels. So he has his backyard and his school and everything else on different, he physically owns, we did the research, he physically owns the four parcels, so that's when we start talking about annexations, we need to do the parcel level, but for the building itself, they only pay for the one property, so it does by annex. Probably just really confusing. So some of the recommendations, so how do you fix all this? One of the things that the, the city staff have been talking with Mr. Carroll, Carroll about, is that the track 30801, that's the one way down there on University Drive, or on Irvine Avenue, I'm sorry, those, because the city currently charges a fee, maintains the lateral, does the sewer main in the street, the neighbors are getting the same level of service, this would be problematic to annex or change into because of the service boundary issue between your neighborhood. So it is recommended that track 3801 stays within the city service area. That's that little Irvine Avenue property. And I'll show you what that looks like in a, in an agreement.
Is, is that involved Santa Ana Country Club?
No, not, not on this one.
Okay.
All of the rest of them that we discussed, the Harper Christian Church, the track 444, YMCA, all those, is proposed to, to be annexed into, into your district. And we'll talk about that. One of the things that LAFCO talks about is a clean service boundary, so it's not zigzagging around parcels and neighbors are saying, oh, I hate this guy, and that guy. So you want a clean and defined service boundary, and I'll show you what that looks like. We do have a, I put it down here, we do have a complete list, there's 146 properties that we're talking about here. Only 47 of them, only 47 of them would be, because we're going to subtract up to 99, 47 would be annexed in. But we did research on who they pay, are they paying the sand district, are they paying you, are they paying the city, who the property owners are. So this has been done over the last several months, so we know exactly who we're talking about and what, and who pays what. It was very interesting, because we did uncover that a couple of people aren't even paying the North County Sanitation District, so that's something we'll probably want to talk to them about. So an agreement, so right away, we know we have this expired agreement. So the city has a difficult time paying bills that they don't have agreements with. You invoice, and as Mr. Carroll said, they have been paying, but it's easier for staff, and it's really part of, it's really part of their purchasing regulations, that they have an agreement in place. So the first step would be, okay, we know all the properties now that flow to the sand district, we should develop an agreement. And part of that agreement would have, similar to the 1979 agreement, the defined service boundary that we know now, what kind of facilities, all, all of the rules, who's going to maintain what, and a new term put in for maybe another 20 years or whatever you guys decide. But to put an agreement in place, this gives Mr. Carroll the ability to invoice the city, he gives the city the ability to pay those bills. Does that be step one? Let's just, so if we do nothing else, let's get an agreement back in place. The agreement would look something like this, so all of the blue properties that we've just discussed, and the green would be identified, they're, they're in there because those don't have any buildings on them, but we want to make sure we identify those, because people do, can build. The biggest green portion on there is the lower portion of the golf course. The golf course technically has several holes, you have sewer main that runs through there, have several holes that are in the Newport Beach service boundary, and then half of their golf course is in your boundary. So they don't have, that I'm not aware of, in that specific area, any connection, but say they want to build a restaurant there. We'd hate to go through this exercise, and the next year, they build a building, and then we're back to trying to annex it in or try to do an agreement. So basically, the agreement would say, the city agrees to continue to pay the Sanitation District for any properties that flow to the sand district until such time, they're annexed in. So if somebody else annexes, you know, or somebody else builds, they would then immediately become on the list.
Which is what Little Newport Golf Course, right?
Little Newport, yeah. Although we think Mesa Drive is built out, there's some little slivers of property there, we don't think there's a parking lot at Bay Corporate Plaza, we don't think they would do that, but what if the property owner decided to build a building? We want to make sure it's part of the agreement, so we're not back revising the agreement. The, when talking to LAFCO, if, if it's decided to move forward with an annexation, LAFCO requires both agencies to be okay with it. And a way of doing that is having resolutions, saying that, yes, we're okay with it, somebody needs to initiate it. The thought going, recently, of course, is that Newport Beach would initiate it. So you guys don't have to do a resolution saying, I want to take over this. We know this is problematic, and sometimes people perceive this as some sort of hostile takeover, we don't want that. So city would say, we could analyze this, we want to do this, they would initiate a resolution first, that would say that we're, we would like to initiate this and introduce this item, and then shortly after, you would have to do, or you could do, a resolution then saying that, yes, we want to start a kind of annexation process. Those two documents within the LAFCO say are capable, and if these are okay with this. So if that makes any sense to you.
Have you been to Newport?
We have not been to Newport yet. So Newport, since they hired me, they're aware of it, the city council is not, some do, I've talked to a couple of councils over the years, of course. But no, we started with you guys first. Are you okay with this? You guys are being annexed, disintended, so we want to start here. The resolution would then exclude those properties down on track 3801, and would be talking about these parcels. This is where we jump from property to parcels. The red line now could be defined as the new service boundary. And now you can see where it's clear, and it's clean, it would go straight across, it doesn't zigzag around, and it includes those parcels that do not have buildings, that's the green. The blue currently have, have facilities that are connected to sewer system. So this brings in Harper Christian Church, or Interpretative Center, track 4444, and of course, all of Mesa Drive. So this just cleans it up, it seemed to be an effective way to do that, and we've gone to the parcel level. You see at the very end, the very right side of the screen, is the end of Mesa Drive, that was that property owner that had the four, he owns the four parcels, he does not have buildings on three of them, but they would be included in the annexation. If that makes sense. So things to do, so first, talk to you guys. Are you okay with it? Do you want to move forward? Is there any big questions you have? We think it's important to reach out to the community, because we know that there's people specifically track 444, 4444, and other people, let them know what we're doing, because this could end up, of course, it will end up, if you do an annexation, into some sort of protest vote. Depending on the direction that you take, we feel it's best to get the community's input to see how difficult it is. We know that the city will ask city council, have you talked to anybody about this, and what's their feeling? So one of the thoughts is, let's do some, a town hall meeting, maybe a march, this is what we're thinking, we'll have LAFCO come, have your staff, Newport staff, talk to the community, invite anybody, what are your questions, what are you, you know, what are you concerned about? You will have residents that have never paid a sewer fee to anybody. You will have residents that have been paying a sewer fee to Newport, and may be concerned about the level of service. You will have other ones that, like Harper Christian Church, that are just confused on why am I paying, but Newport doesn't really do anything. So it's a good time to get that out to the community, where they feel, you know, what, how do they feel about it before moving forward? If we keep moving forward, then the city council, again, would do the resolution first, they have a tentative date of April 23rd, we think we can hit that target, and then you have an ordinance on the 25th, so keeping those closed would be nice. So then the agreement and the resolution would probably go the same evening, or, or day. And then in May, with, with all that done, we would then fill out the application to OC LAFCO. And as Mr. Carroll mentioned, we've been working with them quite closely on the process of what needs to happen. There's quite a bit of work in that, once that happens, because we'll need to define beats and bounds of the actual new boundary, service level changes, those kind of things. So there's a bit of work in that. But that'd be, so that's where it'll, it'll stay until probably around July, where they'll say, okay, we've gotten everything we needed, we've got all the documents, so let's move forward, and then have a protest hearing somewhere around August or September. So these are tentative dates, but this is kind of the direction that we, that staff at least is recommending. With that, that's it, I've tried to cover it in a nutshell, but I open to some questions.
Any questions? Bob?
You mentioned protest, was that a protest to LAFCO? And is it a 50%?
Correct.
Criteria, and does 444 have a 50% vote in this process?
About, there's quite a few problems there. Yeah, it's a big problem.
I was just thinking, a couple questions. In, in reading the report, I, I like the timeline, I think the timeline works to get this done. Couple concerns I have. We've had a gentleman's agreement since 1999, right? No agreement, Newport would basically say, never mind, we don't want to pay them anymore, but not that they would, that, that technically that could happen. Here, here's my biggest concern. Having served on the city council, and we tried to do some, or Newport residents tried to do some annexation of the golf course of Santa Ana Country Club, and some other areas, there tends to be an attitude with Newport residents that wholly, we don't want anything to do, we, we don't want to be any part of the city of Costa Mesa. They, they think we're going to have some issues, you talk about people at this meeting that never pay, we're going to have people at this meeting, this town hall meeting, that are going to say, we, we live in Newport Beach, we don't want to be part of Costa Mesa. So there's going to be a sales job for both sides, convince these residents of Newport, look, you've been paying, you've really been paying to Costa Mesa Sand District ever since you owned that house. They just don't know it, I assume, right?
Right, and, and one point of clarification is, they will still be in Newport Beach.
No question.
So, so they know that.
Yeah.
It's that their sewer service provider will be changing. And some of them will actually be established, because they haven't, as such a place as Mesa Drive, they haven't been paying to anybody, so they don't even know where the sewer goes.
Yeah, I, you know, I totally realize that, and I understand that, but there's always this goat hill versus mackerel flats attitude, that we don't want to pay city, we don't want anything to do with zebra. So we're going to have some, some delicate treading to do, I guess, the way I characterize it, but, but as far as the timeline, I think it works. I mean, you obviously looked at it, Scott, and I, I guess the point is, the quicker the better. If we can get this done quick, I think we need to get it done quick. Got any questions?
Well, the downfall is, you know, we just had a different, a new, a new agreement with Newport, if, in fact, protest, you know, upset the outcome.
Ultimately, if, if this doesn't work, we are going to have to get this agreement back. Gentleman's agreement could look as far as.
That's, that's a choice.
Right.
We'll, we'll have that written to you on, on your point there.
Rob, did you have a question?
Yes, I was going to say exactly what Director Schaefer said, and that is that we get resistance on the phone all the time when people find out they're in our district, because some people don't pay, some of these people don't pay sewer fees, and others don't pay trash fees. So they have this natural resistance, and then, then we tell them that they're responsible for their sewer lateral, and then they really root. So it, it, it could turn into kind of a us versus them, they just don't like us because of those policies and all, besides what Director Schaefer mentioned. So it, it is going to be a tough sound.
Any questions? Are, currently, how do, how do your residents in those areas pay their fees? Do they pay them by the month, or are they assessed, they pay by the month?
That's a bimonthy.
Because we have it on the tax bill.
Right.
That's, that's the only difference I see, that could be a potential problem. So that would be a change for us to have to, I mean, we would tell them, you're no likely going to pay by monthly, you're going to pay on your property tax.
Okay.
Yeah, that could actually help, in a, in a roundabout sort of way, that could actually help people, oh, it's just part of my property tax, twice a year, no good deal.
One thing worth mentioning, if we have done all the what-if scenarios, I didn't put them up here, what if it doesn't get through, what are some of the alternatives? What do we do? We hate to go down that path too far, because it becomes real sticky when you say, well, discontinue service, when the municipal code in City Newport Beach is you must be connected, but then you need to go, you could do a special assessment fee, which is what we first looked at in Newport, when we did the sewer rate study back in 2016, 17. And the problem with that was, is that then you're going through a Prop 218 procedure, and again, they vote that no, so there's a lot of, a lot of what-ifs, and we can do that, and I think we can address every single one of them. I mean, we hope the worst-case scenario isn't that they refuse to be annexed, they refuse to pay any fees, but they want to have free service. Then, then it becomes probably a litigation matter, but we don't think it'll be there, we love to talk to them about that, the difference is, there, just so you know, and you probably already know this by reading the staff report, is there will be a reduction in cost for the homeowner. Now, yes, they may be giving up the lateral, but the fees are less expensive with you than they are with Newport Beach, so there's some benefits. There's some savings to Newport, because Newport's charging them, but then they're turning around and paying you. So it's a win-win for both sides and for the residents, we need to convince the residents of that, but we're happy to do that.
I'd like to hear from Scott on your feelings of the pros and cons as far as what we have to go through.
Well, I, well, first off, I want to thank George for all of, you see that a lot of work was put into this, and George was the initial leader in this, and so I want to thank George for all the hard work that put this together. Also, I just want to, for, actually, I also want to mention, and George should know this, but I did talk, yes, I did talk to Jim River, Joe Nash, OCSD, to all of those properties that we believe OCSD is not assessing their fees, so he's aware of it, and I've actually suggested that he brings on his staff to our town hall meeting as well, to address those issues, so, so they're the know. My feeling is exactly what George said, I, I believe if we can get over that hurdle and annex these properties to service areas, it makes things a lot cleaner for both agencies. As George mentioned, I do believe there's some benefits for the residents, our sewer rates are lower than, than the city. We do have sewer lateral assistance program, or free CCTV program, also, they can get a reimbursement for a cleanout, so there are some benefits there. So we just have to articulate that very well, and also stress that we're not part of the city, you know, we're, we're separate organization, we're already servicing parts of Newport Beach, you're not going to see any, you know, you know, very minimal change to service, so, so we just have to really make sure all our, our eyes and noses are crossed when we do that town hall meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, did you have any other comments that you wanted to share with us?
Thank you, President. Very much, members of the board, my name is Jim Mosher. I've been in Newport Beach, and I am in your sewer district already. So I could be one of the great properties on the map, I'm not actually showing them any of the, of the maps you saw. I, I wanted to emphasize, to make sure it's absolutely clear to you, as, as George mentioned several times, how it works in practice, I don't know, but the policy in Newport Beach regarding the laterals, the city does not maintain the lateral on the private property at all. And just, in, in most cases, like at my house, it's a very short segment from, from the sidewalk to, to the main and the street. So those people in track 4444 are not losing as much maintenance as you might think. Number two, about why the original agreement expired, I don't think it was explained, the city charter in 1979 limited the city's ability to make contracts of more than 25 years unless they put them through a vote of the people, and that contract was never voted on, so it had a short term. There is a quirk, though, the city clerk maintains a list of current active contracts, and she actually is showing this one's expiring in, on August 9th of 2026. And I've not had time to ask the clerk where they got that number from, and the thing she has posted, there's nothing to show, it was never extended beyond 1999. But they are showing a different expiration date. I think it would be good to see the spreadsheet of who currently is paying what to whom, and how much they're paying, because I really couldn't understand the financial part of this. As we've understood, the homeowners are going to be told that they are going to be paying less. As we've understood, the homeowners are going to be told that they are going to be paying less. The city charges typically about $11 and the sanitary district like I own pays like $8 a month. So we would be paying less, yet the final paragraph of the staff report is saying the district somehow would receive more income, if I'm understanding it. And so I'm trying to understand what the city is currently paying, how is it that the owners could be paying less and the district will be getting more? And that is confusing to me. And there was another point that I forgot, so thank you.
Thank you. Rob, this question. Jim Snow, do you have any? What? Oh, thank you. Rob, this question.
Rob, yes.
Rob?
Just one final comment, thank you. In 1999 and a few years thereafter, the Costa Mesa sanitary district rewrote the agreement and did submit it to Newport Beach on at least two occasions. And that agreement was rewritten by Mr. Burns. So they may have taken an unrecorded copy and somehow made it into their files. So it was attempted by the sanitary district to continue that agreement. But Newport Beach had troubles with it and it just kept getting there. That's what happened.
Okay. Just one last question, if I could, Scott.
Hi.
And George, I'm going to, you're talking about a town hall meeting in March. What do you need from us to get this started? Do we have a way to the board meeting to say, go forward with this? Are you going to schedule these town hall meetings or are we going to move forward with this?
Today's meeting is really more for your information. And if you have any directions from staff to give more information back to, that's opportunity today. But we really don't need any action from the board today. Newport Beach will take the lead on scheduling that meeting, that town hall meeting. So when we have that date, we'll let you know. But we really don't need anything from you today. It's just more information.
Okay. Because in the timeline for annexation, it says CNSD and city staff. You're talking about city Newport staff will host?
Yes.
So this will be a meeting hosted, I assume, in Newport?
Yes.
Not here?
Correct.
Okay.
And Newport has agreed to, they have a PIO, they have the resources. It's not, town hall meetings are not unusual. Do you think that will also extend into the homeowners association and the 44ers Association? Might be a good place to talk to them specifically because we know there's some concern.
I think that's a good call. Dealing with associations like I have, they like to have their own meetings and it's going to greatly affect them. I, if the city can do that, I think that's a good call to have a special meeting with just that association.
Again, and working for Brady now, I'm actually very grateful that Newport's put out the funding, obviously, to bring me on board and to do this and host the meetings and do the research. They spent quite a bit of staff time on this, too. It's in their best interest as well, is to get this, you know, we have folks that are receiving sewer service.
Great.
It's very confusing to the residents when they call and Newport can't provide service because there's no sewer. So this is something that needs to be done. I know it's been talked about a long time. You can blame me, I was there for a long time. I did get on the back burner because every time you uncovered it, there was another can of worms. But LAFCO, as Mr. Carroll knows, has been great in helping us so far. Multiple calls and defining lines and doing that thing. So everybody's been working hard on this and I think everybody's on board. But I am grateful to Newport for at least taking the lead on a lot of this stuff.
Hey, George, thank you very much for that presentation.
Yeah. Once this is done, it looks like in, by fall or thereafter, we're left to see approval or not. There's a lot of private pump stations in Costa Mesa and Newport that were built so the developer could pump the sewage up the hill. And those stations have been a, those pump stations have been a big concern to us and the state and whatnot. And they're generally not very well maintained and they're getting old. And they're causing problems. I think an issue down the road would be for the sanitary district and city to begin a discussion to see if any of those could more easily be sewer without the pump station now that the city and the sanitary district are more mature. You know, that's a different issue. But I think it's something that we need to have a discussion on in the future.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One other issue we probably want to work into is in light of what Mr. Mosher said. If the charter requires a vote of the people from an agreement over 25 years, that.
No, sure, well, at that time it did.
So did we deserve?
That provision has been revealed.
Oh, yes, okay. And we showed in need of a vote of the people for this agreement, so.
Thanks, Mr. President.
I think that the board was definitely in favor of pursuing this at whatever level you recommend. So you'll be coming back to us with, or will those meetings take place?
Yes. We'll keep you informed of when the town hall meeting is scheduled. And then the next time you'll be hearing this and be recommending action, we'll be on April 25th.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? Thank you, George, I appreciate it. Let's move on to item one. Orion seven. Solid waste rate study.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to turn to the board to be able to.
Good morning, President. Very much, members of the board. Over the last four months, the district staff has been working closely with our consultants, MBS, the government finance group, to assess all the waste rates. Here today is Greg Hunkler with MBS to present his findings. And he'll be showing us the recommended options for adoption. And we will staff Greg with here after the presentation and ask any questions you may have.
Sure George didn't steal it? Good smile. It's there. Want to go forward?
All right, good morning. I'm Greg Hunkler with MBS. I've been working with Scott Nivella on this solid waste rate study. Briefly, we want to go over, summarize what was in the RIT report. I think you have a copy of. It's actually become quite a bit simpler over the period of time as we've kind of eliminated some alternatives. So talk a little about the rate study methodology, the different alternatives evaluated, go through the different steps, the different components of the study and what those results were, and talk about the next steps. So rate study methodologies are really the same whether it's water, sewer, solid waste. You should be pretty familiar with this process here, these three basic steps. They're done sequentially, they each have their own components within them. The financial plan revenue requirements really is where you look at the revenues and expenses. You're looking at projections of what your, you know, revenue you're going to be bringing in, how costs are going to be going up. That really defines, once you have the rate revenue and other revenues. So once you subtract the other revenues, you don't collect through rates, you come up with a net revenue requirements per year. How much you collect through rates is a separate matter. And at this point, we have a deficit, so you, the rates do need to go up at some point. The cost of service analysis, so this study, this is where you basically take the revenue requirements and you figure out how that should be allocated to different customers. At the beginning of the study, one of the things that we wanted to do was look at, what would you charge for different cart sizes? For some reasons, that's not something that the district's going to pursue at this time. Although they are going to study it and bring something forward another year or two. So after the cost of service, where you allocate, and yours is very simple because you have all residential customers. Typically, we have commercial, industrial, multifamily, you know, yours are pretty much all residential customers. That's very simple. The rate design also, so we did come up with results to look at the rates per cart size. There does need to be quite a bit of research and data developed in the future if you want to go forward with a more complicated rate structure. So we need to know how many customers have what size containers. As we mentioned in the workshop before, there was the question about whether Prop 218 would require something more along the lines of, you know, because different customers have different numbers of carts. Does that need to be addressed? The legal opinion was that no, it doesn't, that basically an account and a service is a service. So at this point, you have a flat rate. It doesn't matter what the number of carts you have or the cart sizes. So these are the three basic steps that the study went through. The financial plan alternatives, these are the two that we kind of end up bringing forward. There are a number of other ones that we also looked at, how to get rid of the deficit in two years. That was an earlier one we looked at. The proposed one, so the proposed financial alternatives, the one-year 13.93% rate increase. There's reasons why that number is so specific. And then the rate alternatives, you know, as I said, we looked at different cart sizes and the recommendation is to continue with the flat rate, one rate for everybody. When you look at the first part, step one, the financial plan, here's kind of the roll-up of your budget. So, you know, we see here what the annual deficits are, you know, what the numbers look like with and without the rate increases. The yellow part at the bottom identifies the rate increases for the next, so you can adopt rate increases over a five-year period under Prop 218. So the recommended alternative has the one-year 13.9% rate increase. But you can see what happens to the annual deficits. And we have some other figures that will make that a little bit more clear also, like here. So obviously, so if you look at the year 1920, which is 2020 on that chart there, so that shows you the revenues, the rate revenue, your total revenue. With a 13.9% rate increase, to actually get to the top of that bar would be 18.7. So, you know, if you did the rate study in a maybe more legalistic way, every year you would set your rates at exactly what the revenue requirements are. But you have good reserves, so even though this doesn't, and we have a couple of charts on the reserves, even though this doesn't meet all the revenue, the net revenue requirements, it's pretty close. So going forward, obviously, when you look at that, at some point in the future, you're going to need to do some additional rate increases. So this is what happens to your recommended reserve. So in the past, it's looked pretty healthy, but obviously, you've got a trend going down. So the light blue bars there are without the rate increase. So as you can see, in that year 1920, the 3.8 million is the reserves, including that 13.9% rate increase. And then the blue bar is less. So if you follow that light blue bar down, that's what happens without the rate increases. And since it's only one-year rate increase, you're still going to be going down. As I said, you're going to need some rate increases in the future. So the cost of service study, the cost allocation part of this, basically you break down the different types of service that you're providing to customers. So you've got the collection part, the disposal part, and then organics and overhead. And this just shows how costs were broken out. A lot of this actually isn't necessary, you know, when you're just doing a flat rate. But you do have the results and you have the rate model now that if you wanted to look at what the charges are for individual cart sizes, that's kind of the reason that we went through all this. So it's there if you ever want to resurrect that in the future. So the net revenue requirements, if you look at that total, is 5.79 million per year. That's what you need. With the 13.9% increase, it's 5.559 million down at the bottom. So you're not quite getting enough to meet all the revenue requirements, but you're getting fairly close. So this is how these different categories, collection, disposal, organics, and overhead broke down in terms of percent of the total budget. So when you allocate those out, the collection costs are allocated by number of accounts, disposal costs by volumes. And this would be much more of interest if you were looking at different cart sizes. So actually have those results, but we're not going to go through all that detail since that's not the recommendation. And then the organics and admin also by the number of accounts. So that's how we allocate those costs out. You know, essentially, it comes down to, for flat rates, the total cost divided by the number of accounts that you have. So allocated cost by the number of accounts, here's the actual numbers. The additional cart cost actually comes out a little bit less than that, but district staff is recommending just keeping it at the current level of $9. So the 1995 per month increased the annual cost from 216 to 23940. So that's the recommended rate. In terms of the projected flat rates, since you have a one-time rate increase, that will stay at the 1995 until you have additional rate increases in the future and then the $9 for the additional cart. And then your regional comparison, so as we talked about in the workshop, these are always interesting. So you can see where you're at now and where the new rates are going to put you. It's always a little bit of a difficult comparison because other places are increasing rates all the time. We don't know exactly when, you know, this is kind of where they're at now. If they were to include you in their rate analysis, they would show you an 18 because you haven't adopted new rates yet. So this probably is better than it actually looks because everybody on a regular basis is increasing rates. So you're still, you know, kind of right in there, definitely not above, you know, surrounding areas. You're kind of right there in the mix. So in terms of the second rate alternative that we're looking at, the one that would eliminate the deficits in five years, the first year of your rate increase would be, instead of the 1995, would be the 1874. But that alternative also includes five consecutive years of rate increases. So that's just how you compare the first year. If you're interested, I do have a table at the end that shows the five-year projection of the two alternatives. So the next steps, basically to approve the rate study and the proposed rates, you would have to direct staff to send out the Proposition 218 notices. That's a 45-day noticing period where people can respond and turn in their protest ballots if they choose. Sometime after that 45-day period, you'd have to hold a public hearing, receive the results of the protest balloting process. Assuming there's not 50% plus one, you could approve the rates at that time. The intention would be that effective July 1st this summer, that you would be adopting the new rates. So with that, that's a summary. And open for questions?
Any questions?
So the 13.9% is basically a $2.50 increase per month?
Well, it goes 18 to 19, so $1.95.
Well, the 13.9 is, that's only a 10.8% increase.
Oh, yes. So. So if you're doing an across-the-board adjustment, you take the 13.9% and just apply it to every rate that you have. This, yeah, so we actually, I think we talked a little bit about this, numbers are sometimes a little difficult.
With consultants, help.
Yeah, yeah. Well, sometimes we confuse things more than we help, but anyway. So basically, your revenue, you know, you've got a bunch of different things. You've got your current revenue, which is the result of over the year of certain number of accounts being there. You know, basically, that 1995 is a result of the total revenue requirements. So we take the existing rate revenue, increase that by 13.9, divide that by the 22,804 accounts, and that's the rate you come up with. So if you, so accounting-wise, if you get into the details, you can take those current number of accounts times the $216. That comes out a little bit less than 1% difference between the two. So, you know, numbers are kind of dynamic, they're kind of flow over time.
Will a $1.95 get us to a, end the deficit spending?
No, you'll still have a smaller deficit. And going forward, that deficit will get bigger every year.
Yeah, sure. If, in fact, we have CPI and whatever.
Correct.
Art, did you have a question that's going to ask? Do you include the CPI increases for CRNR?
Right, we've, it's part of our projection. Yes, yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I'm all in favor of getting rid of the deficit as soon as possible, even in a one or a two-year process. And then, you know, then addressing the potential for a cart-based charge. If, in fact, you know, we can figure out where the carts are, I'm not for spending any money on the cart-based process, you know, until we erase the deficit.
But don't we have a, we have some money in that account already to offset the deficit that we've got?
Well, that's what we've been doing for several years.
But with this increases, we still could have that money in our account to offset the deficit.
Yes, but if we don't do another rate increase, after then, the deficit will grow. So this is kind of like, kind of like plug-in and the dam, you know, temporary, until we can get an accurate account of our inventory out there of the cart sizes. For today, we're not looking for any action from the board today. This is really more for your information. Tomorrow night, we're presenting this new plan to the CDC to get the recommendation so we can forward that to you. And then we're having one more town hall meeting at the end of February, February 26th. Thank you. Then we'll bring this back to you in your March meeting for recommendation of adoption. And then that'll get us ready to prepare our notices for the Prop 218 hearings. So today's just really to answer questions and give us any kind of feedback, and we'll come back in March with a recommendation.
Bob, did you have a comment?
A 13.9% increase in the fee will eliminate the present use of reserves?
You'll still have a deficit, but it'll be much smaller.
Be really small or much smaller?
Well, okay, so to eliminate the deficit the year 1920, it would be 18.7%. So the difference there is how much you're short.
Anybody else have a question? When we go out to, a rate increase is for the five-year plan or are you talking like one-year plan?
This is like a basic two-year plan. It'll be, it'll be the 1995, and it'll be that for two years, and then we'll come back. Hopefully, then we'll have the inventory of our cart sizes. We'll do another study, determine what the appropriate fee for those different cart sizes will be, and also the how-to for the bridge deficit, bring that back to you. We'll prove that and do another Prop 218 hearing in three years.
And if we find that we don't want to go that direction, we'll still have a new rate increase?
We'll still have to do a, yeah, we'll still have to do a rate increase, yes.
Scott, did you say the 1995 rate would go into effect in 2020?
No, if you approve it, it won't affect in 1920. This is the next, the upcoming fiscal year, the fiscal year 1920.
So the next fiscal year?
Yes, and then it'll stay that in 2021. And then 2122 is where we're looking at doing another Prop 218 hearing, hopefully the vertical rates.
If it's on July 1st, we go to 1995?
Correct, correct.
So this year's property bills will be reflecting the 1995 rate?
Correct, yes.
And also, July 1st of 2020?
Correct.
It'll be 1995.
Correct.
Well, because we're going to go for two-year rate.
We're going for two-year rate increases. Well, that's to be discussed.
No, if we approve this now, we're, we're, I'm not saying that. If we approve this, then the rate in July 1, 2019, and July 1 of 2020 will both be 1995.
That's the recommendation.
Yeah, okay. But Bob's saying we may only do a one-year increase.
I got you. I assume either doing a two-year, because that's what staff said. Me, what I was, it's a decision.
Okay, anything else? So we'll have a recommendation in March. Yeah, yes. Code enforcement. Ed?
Good morning, President Furman, members of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board. Ed Roberts, the Code Enforcement Officer for the Santa District. I'll be presenting the January 2019 Code Enforcement Officer Report. Ladies and gentlemen, for the month of January, I had a series of seven private scavenging investigations. There's a brief narrative attached to each of the locations with a map we referenced, showing the locale and the contact. In summary, most of these contacts have involved transgender indigenous individuals. I had a telephonic complaint received at the sanitation district last month from one of the directors responding to the location. I wrote a brief narrative for your reference, but essentially it involved a female who was going through some sort of mental crisis during the personal contact. I do have training in mental health. I did recognize the indicators of schizophrenia activity. It was a safe contact. She wasn't having a violent crisis, but she was in need. I made contact with Scott. Scott recommended that I report all my information, as per how we normally do, to the City Costa Mesa Mental Intervention Team. Mary Almond and her staff members were apprised of my contact, sent her an email with a description of the location and nature of the contact. I have not seen that person since. I told Ms. Schaefer that the nature would be with indigenous folks, because they're very nomadic. They do move from cities to cities, regions, so we may not see that person again for a part of a while. But I will be patrolling that area a little bit more vigilantly, just to make sure. Beyond that contact, there's nothing really exceptional to report, very routine month. Or I'm going to be moving on to trash container enforcement. If none of you have any questions regarding the scan questions for Ed. For the month of January, 105 cases were opened for reference to trash containers. Only one of them really sticks out of my mind. The person didn't agree with our Sanitary District Operational Code, but ultimately, we did have compliance. A lot of folks don't take kindly to your staff members coming to their home and letting them know, you know, that these are some of the rules.
These people just leaving their carts out in front of, I mean, just guys people on my street that leave them at the front of the garage on the left, and that's typically what you get, right?
That's what I come across, sir. Majority of the complaints that we're receiving aren't the carts being left at curbs, per se. It's, they'll be kind of pushed back, not to the satisfaction of the complaining party, whether they be barely visible in public view. That's where we have to use that discretion, these, you know, letter losses, nothing in public view. Spirit of law, the person's done a very good effort to reduce it to public view and impact. We don't push it. But a lot of folks do dig their heels in the ground and, you know, no amount of coaxing can take place until you threaten to take some sort of enforcement action, which is not the goal. But I did have one person that just took a lot.
It was about Alaska Avenue.
It was. It was in that area, sir.
Yeah, I know your target.
Yes, sir.
You know, remember a couple of years ago, we had that issue? I don't remember the name of the street, but that alleyway over on the east side that, you remember?
Yeah, yes, sir. I believe it was Broadway, or was it, it was in the Broadway area, it's further or Flower?
Maybe it was Flower.
It wasn't, it wasn't Broadway.
Wasn't Broadway. Remember that one alleyway that, and I think the city was concerned because of fire, an emergency access?
Yes, sir. When I received the complaint, essentially, the backlog to that or the backswing to that is there's a neighborhood dispute between two joint property owners. One of the property owners brought it to the sanitation district's attention that all kinds of folks were leaving their trash carts out in public view in the alley, not, not on Flower or Broadway or whichever the streets it was. I contacted, I believe it was Larry Drayman and City Public Services to find out if the alley was dedicated, went away, you know, just to research it. The concern of city staff was fire apparatus being able to go up and down that alley essentially without any kind of, you know, obstruction by the trash carts. We did, I carpeted that area with our notices, and most of the folks are complying. There are just a couple of carts that, you know, on occasion will be stacked up against the garage, but they do not abut to a major street. I believe the direction of the board at that time was, the spirit of law, the intent of law for our code was the dedicated street, the frontage of the street, not an alley. As long as there was no obstruction to traffic or fire apparatus, it was okay. Except potentially it could involve thousands of properties abutting to various alleys that we have in the community. But nothing of any note to report with the trash containers. Ultimately, compliance has been achieved, sometimes slower than others, but at the end of the day, we get those carts out of the way. No cases of graffiti. And as usual, for the benefit of the board, on the rear page, you'll see a map of Costa Mesa in Newport with some of the scavenging locations identified. And I'll bring it to your attention if you notice there's been a nut tick again north end. It just seems to be, for whatever reason, most of the folks are gravitating towards the north end of town, and it could have everything to do with Santa Ana River. I hate to speculate, I don't know why. Anything else?
Any questions for Ed?
Thank you. My pleasure.
I think we need to congratulate Sergeant Roberts in his other, just promote him to sergeant in his other career, so.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Wes. Okay, organics tonnage report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, items two and three are standard reports, just staff will answer your questions.
Any questions? Solid waste diversion report?
Yeah, staff will answer your questions.
Contracts and purchase orders signed by the general manager.
So, thank you, thank you, Mr. President. So back on January 24th, the board was considering adopting ordinance number 124, which would reenact the purchasing provisions of the operations code. Specifically, it would give the general manager greater authority to sign contracts that are valued at $200,000. As you may recall, the board did not take any action that night, but instead directed staff to bring back a list of contracts signed by the general manager. And attached in your staff report are several lists of contracts of the past three years. Contracts are for CFP projects, capital group projects, service contracts, and purchase orders. And as you'll see in the attachment, the general manager, myself, I signed mostly purchase orders, the average of about 40 purchase orders a year. Haven't answered any questions they have on the contracts. What we're seeing today is really a direction for you, if you want to continue to consider adopting ordinance number 124. If you do, then we will bring that back to you at your February 4th consideration. If not, then we won't bring it back, and staff will continue using the current purchasing policies where the general manager's authority to sign contracts will get the $125,000.
Okay, any comments or recommendations?
What I'd like to ask, Scott, is that you report to us periodically, even monthly, on, you know, which of these kinds you do, because, you know, the list was, it was over three years, but it was pretty substantial.
Sure.
And I know you get the authority to do this and you, and, you know, some of our emergencies, but I'd like to just be more premier with getting a, maybe as part of the monthly report.
Yes, thank you. That was directed at me to do at your January 24th meeting. I'm currently maintaining a list of contracts, so in your February 4th meeting, I'll have the contracts I signed in January. So everyone, and I'll put it in the set calendar, you'll have that.
If staff's looking at your direction, Jim, on whether to bring the ordinance back or not to increase the authority, I'm in favor of bringing it back. I think comments we made at the last board meeting is, we have a lot of faith in Scott, and in looking over the report, I would like to move forward and increase his authority.
I actually am not in favor of necessarily increasing it until, you know, we get a little more history, but, and then, and we've got three years of history, and there's rarely been anything that Scott needed to approve, you know, over $90,000. There are mostly little, little contracts, some little things. You know, I really don't see the necessity to.
Arlene?
I don't see any problem with this. I agree with Director Schaefer. I feel that he has been very forward as far as giving us a weekly report, as well as he could hear what you're saying, and still give our monthly, and we can still move forward with it, too.
I personally think that we should let him, give him more authority. I think that he's demonstrated that he's certainly capable of it. Art, did you have a comment?
Is there a certain amount that other districts or cities have, add them out, that they're allowed to, the managers?
I think what I'm talking, I'm trying to call Mr. Moser, brought to your attention at the January 24th meeting, and not many cities or special districts have authorities, the general management authority spent $200,000, very few $200,000, not very many have authority to spend, decided $125,000. So it's not very many.
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards Bob to give a little more information. I would probably knock my raises to $200,000 at this time, but that's just two of us.
One other requirement, did I add something? One, you know, the law just changed, so perhaps you might want to wait a while and just see how many cities do go to $200,000 limit? And maybe there'll be a more consensus that this is the appropriate limit, you'll feel more comfortable with it, because the law did just change.
That was Bob's recommendation.
Yeah, that's fine, too. I mean, if we want to look at that track record, I don't have any problem with that.
Why don't we revisit it in, what, three months?
How about six months?
Six months?
Sure.
Yeah, six months, okay.
That's fine, that'd be great.
Okay, did you have a comment?
Thank you again, President Furman. First, I wanted to remind the board, my understanding ordinance had two distinct parts to it. One was changing the limits about what bidding procedures would be for vetting a contract. And then the separate one was who would review and sign the contract finally or approve the signing of it. And those two are distinct ideas. And those two are distinct ideas. In the numbers that are provided here, I have seen no reason at all why the signing authority has to be raised, because the current limit is not being touched at all. And I wanted to remind the board of the operations code, section 404 on 40, which reinforces the public's perception that the elected officials are supposed to be overseeing most of the contracts, certainly the big ticket ones. And that section of the operations code says, in accordance with Health and Safety Code, section 648.7, all contracts must generally be signed by the president and countersigned by the secretary, which gives the impression to the public that contracts are generally being viewed by the elected officials. And this list is suggesting to me that it's quite the opposite in this district. The board is actually approving, or the president's signing very, very few of the contracts. So, raising the limit seems counter to the policy direction of the board having oversight over the contracts. And I would recommend not raising the limit, although the bidding procedures, changing those limits due to inflation and so forth may be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Why don't we, if it's okay with the board, go with the six-month review, see how it pans out, make the decision at that time. That's good. Quarterly legislative update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gina, if you're on, give your report.
Thank you. Good morning, President Drayman and members of the board. Before you, is our first quarterly legislative update of 2019. And as of last week, there were about 341 new bills introduced in the assembly and 203 new bills introduced in the senate. Since it is still early in the session, many of the bills still contain preliminary language. So, you'll notice that many of the bills listed in the report state that the legislature intends to address certain issues, but the bill language doesn't yet specify how they plan to do so. So far, we're seeing the legislature tackle many of the same issues that have been discussed during previous sessions, such as expanded protections against discrimination and sexual harassment, reduction of single-use plastic products, and various policies to address California's ongoing drought. So, I'm just going to briefly summarize some of the bills in the report, starting with the topic of sexual harassment and discrimination. We have AB 9, which is on page two, if you're following along in the report. AB 9 would extend the amount of time an employee has to report discrimination or harassment from one year to three years, so it's just extending that reporting time period. We also have AB 51, which seeks to prohibit employers from forcing an employee or potential employee to disclose instances of sexual harassment as a condition of their employment. That's also on page two. Another area of focus is paid family leave. So, we have AB 196 on page four, and this bill seeks to expand the paid family leave program to provide full wage replacement for workers that earn under $100,000 annually in instances where they're taking time off to care for a seriously ill family member or bonding with a newborn. Also, SB 135, it's just an intent bill, so it states that the legislature intends to strengthen California's family leave laws. And also in relation to employment legislation, we have AB 333, and that is on page six. It seeks to extend whistleblower protections to contractors that operate facilities, services, and programs for state and local government agencies. Moving on to some solid waste bills, AB 129 on page three. It seeks to address the environmental pollution that's caused by microfibers, and these are tiny plastics that are released into the environment when synthetic fabrics are washed. It's estimated that microfibers are the single largest contributor to watershed pollution. AB 161 is a bill that's looking to reduce paper waste, and that would require retailers to make electronic receipts available for all transactions, and it would require them to provide paper receipts only upon request.
Is this the CVS bill where the protesters went to the assembly with, when you go to CVS Pharmacy and they print out the receipt, it's like, there was one guy that had a drink all over him. This is the bill that addressed that, I think, wasn't it?
It may be, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't go to CVS, but apparently they give you a lip me of stuff. Yeah, I think this is the bill that is trying to address that.
Yeah. And then the last solid waste bill I have is AB 215, and that's seeking to expand punishments for illegal public dumping, and it would actually make jail time, county jail time, a punishment after the fourth conviction of public dumping.
Public dumping of what?
Of any waste, so, I think that includes private property, public property, parks, roads. And then lastly, I'll talk a little bit about water, loose water bills that I've seen so far. We have AB 134, and that's on page three. It states that the legislature wishes to enact policy to ensure that all Californians have access to safe, clean, and affordable drinking water. So, that's another intent bill, still has pretty big language, but we'll continue to follow it. And then AB 231 on page five, this would exempt recycled water pipeline projects from SEQA in order to help mitigate drought conditions. And lastly, SB 13, that's on page seven, and this is another bill having to do with accessory dwelling units, which has been a big topic over the last couple of sessions, and that's just another term for a granny flat or a secondary unit. This bill still has some pretty vague language, but it just says that they're seeking to reduce fees and other barriers associated with the development of accessory dwelling units. So, we'll keep an eye on that one as well. I will continue to monitor all of these bills and provide some recommended actions during our next update. By that time, we should have some more refined bill language, and we'll start to see some other agencies starting to take positions on the bills, so.
Thank you, Gina.
Yeah.
Any questions of Gina?
Jim, report. Looking through, like, I think it was SB 33 and 54, where they talked about changes for recycling regulations, and they're focusing on straws, obviously, and all that. Neither of those, or any of those, have any bearing on the 193 regulations, right? I mean, they're still following the guideline for where we have to be on our threshold. These bills seem to be skirting around that a little bit. Do you, do you have a sense of that?
Are you referring to the diversion goal?
The diversion goals, yeah.
You know, it's hard to say right now. I didn't find any bills in this session so far that are talking about the actual state goal. So, they do seem to be focused on, like, single-use plastics and very specific aspects of it, but not too many, like, general...
Yeah, they're not looking at making any changes of the diversion. It just seemed like a little bit I read about them, they were trying to change some things, but they haven't been specific enough to make the changes or something. Straw things have become a big deal.
It has, yes.
Okay, Arlene, did you have a special thing?
Yes, I just wanted to say, if there's anything that you want me to take up the supplemental, I'll be going up there March 1st.
Okay.
On the legislation, and I could say something.
Share it with them, sure. I'll let you know.
Otherwise, I'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Let's move along to pharmaceutical and sharps waste stewardship.
Thank you, Mr. President. Deidre Dusman, keeping us report.
Director, President Drayman, members of the board, for direction of the board, the directors at the last study session, staff research SB 212, which is the nation's first extended producer responsibility program for sharps and pharmaceutical waste. The goal is to establish a state and community disposal option for home generators causing cyclical drive and sharp space. Because of the bill, manufacturers of drugs, prescriptions, and over-the-counter medications will be required to create, fund, and participate in the statewide kickback system. With the passing of this bill, CalRecycle is required to adopt the regulations for the program. The program is not expected to be implemented until fiscal year 2122, based on the timeline provided by CalRecycle that is included in your report. District staff will continue to monitor the development of this program and will bring back the item when more information is available. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Of course. Okay, so, the new regulations are going to kind of restrict, let me give you an example. Like, I have a doctor who's called an endocrinologist, right? And they deal with internal issues, diabetes and things like that. So, in my endocrinologist's office, there was a big sign that said, regulations are coming, that are going to restrict what you can do with your, with your needle, with your testing strips and all that stuff, right? I'm going to tag on to Art's philosophy. Do we get any credit for those things, for our diversion, when we turn them in?
We definitely, the district definitely counts the waste disposal in those boxes in our annual diversion, but it does not, it's counted separately for CalRecycle reporting.
Okay.
So, our solid waste diversion is what's here on our pickup curbside, and then we get credit for all these additional programs.
Okay. The reason I bring it up is, I mentioned to the staff, to the people at my doctor's office about, hey, if anybody questions where they can take their sharps, I said that we have the disposal thing. So, somehow along the line, we need to maybe reach out to HOG and Kaiser and some of these big medical providers and say, because they're going to restrict what people can do with these things, CalRecycle is. So, maybe we could get some credits for people bringing the stuff here.
Because even if they report to CalRecycle, we can still use it for ours.
Right.
Just like we did for OCC.
Yeah, we're not talking about huge per semi, there isn't that big of a deal, but as a community service by reaching out to these doctors and these providers, maybe we could benefit from that a little bit. Just like Bob.
I will, again, I will like to be true to the medical facilities of the district.
HOG would be the biggest, yes.
Well, the HOG, the sub-HOG, but HOG is in Newport Beach.
Well, but...
But you have this small...
The doctors are all...
On Baker Street, yeah.
Anyway, just trying to, I'm just trying to help, aren't I? It comes from you.
I was going to say something. You're not now, though, right? Okay, let's move on to construction inspection program.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached to your staff report is a letter from Rob Amers requesting his firm be reinstated to provide construction inspection services for the district. I think Rob is going to speak for you today, under advice by the district council. We're requesting Rob to, thanks for sitting in the audience, and also speak to you at the podium as a consultant, not as a district engineer. As soon as Rob is done with his presentation to the board, staff will present their suggestions for an inspection program here in the district. So, I'll turn it over to Rob to get the board.
May I? Thank you. Have they turned in a green card? Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Mr. President and the board members. The one thing I didn't want to happen was to put the board in an uncomfortable position. We've had a great relationship over the long term, and I am a team player, so whatever you decide, I would be fine with it. It's more important that we succeed as a team and a district than it is for any individual gain or perceived way of doing business. We do, at my business, we do have a lot of expert engineers, and we've been designing sewer facilities for the long term. I'm very concerned that if the construction inspector is headquartered here, there's no real chance for the inspector to be with the people who designed those facilities and that have experience and that can give that experience to the inspector. There was, there are items in my letter, numbers three, four, five, and six on page two, that would not really happen if the construction inspector is located here at the district. For instance, we, when we design new facilities, we do include the inspector in the design meetings. We have roundtable meetings. The inspector does go out and checks out a few things for us. He helps us understand what's out there. And at the same time, the inspector gets a lot of education just from being around the engineers. Additionally, I personally go, I personally check every plan that goes through the district to make sure it's okay. And up until we had the current inspector, I would go through every plan with the inspector to show them where the sewer is, to explain what's going to happen, what to look for, what times to be there, and to report back to me to make sure that it's happening. None of that is going on right now, unfortunately. And further, for instance, we do not deceive the redline plans that we need to, as built the originals, and get those in line for our sewer atlas. There's nobody at this office who has the expertise to, to answer questions for the inspector. So, I just think that it works better for the inspector to be out of the engineer's office. Lastly, I can lower my rates, I can put a cap on the number of hours that the inspector works, I can make all those things happen. And whatever the district would want to happen along those lines, I can certainly make it happen. So, I wrote a short letter, just two pages, really, and I'm sure you've all read it. So, let me close by saying, I am a team player, and whatever the board makes decide would be fine with me. I'll still be here, and we enjoy the work. I have some of the best sewer experts in the industry in my office, so the plans that we've been putting out are excellent, and I'm proud to say that they are that good and that hopefully we can continue that in the future. So, those are my comments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rob. We, what's our next...
This is a discussion. So...
If I may, Mr. President, if Rob could address prevailing wages in, especially $5 an hour, is that prevailing wage?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
If you can address, how you're going to address prevailing wage with your inspector?
What I do as far as pay goes, is I stay abreast of local wages. For instance, the city of Costa Mesa has construction inspectors, and they also have the head of inspection. I see what those wages are, and frankly, I pay my people a little bit more than that. I like to let them know that they're paid well, and they are rewarded for working hard. So, prevailing wages is not a problem for me. And if the board would want that person to be an employee versus a subcontractor, I can make that happen, too. Right now, you have an outside inspector from a civil engineering consulting firm, and I know Mr. Rao, I've met him in the field. and I know Mr. Ralph, I've met him in the field. I didn't really ever see his resume. I don't know whether he can read plans. I know he has said that he has a little experience in pump stations and all. These are specialized areas in the industry, so there is a lot to learn, and we have been working, he has been out there. There are a few things that haven't worked, but as far as prevailing wage, that's not a problem. Contractual relationship is not a problem either. I'm happy to do whatever the board would like to be done.
If we're having independent contracting or inspection services from a firm that's not a union shop, why is prevailing wage an issue?
Thank you. I'll answer that question if I may. The labor code provides that certain professions have to be paid prevailing wages, and construction manager inspection would be one of those. This whole discussion about prevailing wages and overtime, whether a person's an independent contractor or employee, cuts a few different ways, including with our own employee. And generally, you can't be a salary person unless you are a certain level of professional like an engineer or a termite architect. So then you have to be paid overtime. There was some confusion as to whether or not the RBH employee was an independent contractor or employee. If it's an independent contractor, and probably if he's an employee, either way, you have to pay prevailing wages, and we have to comply with those laws.
So the regulation's on us, not on the contractor?
It's on both. The contractors are responsible, and, you know, there's legal penalties and, you know, even crimes if you don't do certain things, and we have an obligation to ensure of that. And a city employee would not have to be paid prevailing wages, but he would have to be paid overtime. If, you know, it was a job that went on into the night, he'd have to be paid overtime. Overtime's a complication for this, as is prevailing wage.
Just, let me, so what Rob is proposing in his letter is a rate of $65 an hour. That's not the inspector's rate, right? He's gonna pay his inspector whatever that rate is, so let's assume, and I know a lot of Rob deals with this, let's assume 50/50, right? Whatever is, I mean, the contractor, the inspector gets paid $35 an hour. Going, the prevailing wage rate, the prevailing wage rate for a construction inspector is $70.30 an hour. Okay, so we have concerns with the rate that Rob submitted, it's not complying with the law. There's, overtime is $92.50. That all has to be applied. And so if you want to consider Rob's firms, you've got to have those all in consideration, is that prevailing wage has to be included. So what, again, this is for discussion. Rob has mentioned redline plans are not received yet. Well, that's because we don't have any, construction work hasn't completed yet with redlines. We would do those redlines and submit those to Rob, our inspector right now. Does not meet with Rob on roundtables, designing constructions. I do believe they have done that with them, maybe not all of them, but then again, that's just some coordination we do have to do with our inspector, current inspector Anderson Penns and Rob. No issue with plans, I think we're definitely agreeing with that. Rob does excellent job with plans, that's not an issue. What staff is recommending is that we bring the inspection services in-house. As you will see in my staff report, we do have an employee here, an engineer technician, who's expressed interest in being the construction inspector, and that falls right into our strategic plan for, strategic plan, strategic goal number 6.5, create and develop a plan which we've done with Val. It also promotes high employee satisfaction. Our engineer technician right now is enrolled at Santiago Canyon College for the toll work certification program, specified inspections. He's also taking courses with the American Toll Work Association, and he's also going out in the field. So we believe within a year's time, he'll be fully qualified and trained to be that inspector. The, I showed in the staff report some current wages. The special districts are paying construction inspectors, and that's the fully important, including salary and benefits. As district council mentioned, cities which would be included, assuming it's a special district, do not pay prevailing wages. So that's where, that's why you see those rates are lower than prevailing wage. There would be other expenses. Obviously, if you do an in-house construction inspector, obviously, we'd want a vehicle, also a refurbished electric vehicle, like we have for cone forcing, we'd have to get a charger for that. Also, maybe a laptop, so the inspector can maintain his logs with a computer. So there are some additional one-time expenses, but in the end, I believe it'll still be less if we have an in-house inspector versus an outside inspector paying prevailing wages. And I believe by, like, 2020, we can have our full-time in-house inspector. So those are some to consider. Again, happy to answer any questions you can have.
Any questions? Rob?
Rob, you know, I have had inspection inspectors work for me when I was in private industry, and the corporate knowledge that that inspector had was invaluable. You know, something as simple as type tape, copper, universal, whatever the contractor was trying to provide. You know, I, and I think that relationship was developed, well, that knowledge was developed over, I mean, a very intimate knowledge of plans and specs, which I think your staff probably has. One of my concerns is, it appears, though, that the construction inspector was working a 40-hour week forever. Or, you know, it comes down to, basically, a 40-hour week. You provide us with, you provide us with estimates of construction administration, which probably includes, you know, the construction inspection hours. There's a wide diversity of construction needs. You know, the permits, they come and go, you know, they can come 20 at a time, or they can come three a month, or whatever, or, you know, probably more random than that. So it's important, you know, that we have the construction inspector, you know, just there and knowledgeable. With the corporate knowledge, I think that you have and/or they have to provide us with it. You know, and I don't think we've probably given the Anderson Penna guy, you know, adequate time to get that corporate knowledge, and you've explained three or four areas where he doesn't even have access to get that knowledge. You know, which we could be directed, no matter which way we go. It seems to me, well, one thing I would like to see is more supervision on your part and more detail, you know, just like I asked Scott in the previous thing, you know, for all the list of contracts, more detail, probably in the time card process, you know, where an employee, a potential employee of yours spends his time. You know, the devil's in the details, I guess. But I think that construction inspection is a unique, a unique profession, and corporate knowledge is extremely important. You know, and we have that, we have that with your construction inspector. Not that we couldn't gain it, you know, in another means, but the worrisome part to me is, if, you know, when you hire a professional, you have, you have to pay attention to the number of hours that that person charges, because you've already established a fee with us. It's either that or you work, you can only work 120 hours a week, you know, to make up the difference. If you don't, if you don't control that professional's, you know, time that he put in on the project, you know, I think that's a weakness that you need to overcome with this particular professional. Or it seems like it's been lacking to me in the past, anyway.
Thank you. If I may respond, you are correct in that passing on corporate knowledge is kind of like the old guy telling it to the young guy. We did, we did train Joe Lamone by both the previous inspector before him...
Carl or what?
Paul.
Paul.
And myself. So we spent some years in training, where we had two inspectors for a while. And we actually, I was training an engineer to take my place also, but then there became such scrutiny on the hours that we had to cut back on everything. So that engineer saw that it didn't look good for the future, so that idea got abandoned. But I do agree with you that training and corporate knowledge is very important. With regard to overseeing their work, yes, I could have been way more diligent. I do know that, I do believe that what I read about private facilities and public facilities, the books I read say that you're supposed to inspect your own facilities continuously. We can abide, we did abide by that, and that led to a lot of hours. We can cut back on the private side to be able to make the public side work, or we can just back off the public side too and inspect at certain times. I think that the, switching subjects to pay, I don't necessarily agree that construction inspection prevailing wage is $70 an hour. I do see all the time cards from the contractors, and I see who's paid what. There is actually no category for construction inspection in prevailing wages. What you have to do when there are not exact descriptions of the people you hire, you have to use what's close to it. I've always relied on equalling or bettering the city pay rates. I wasn't aware that everything had to be prevailing wage for an inspector. The inspector's not a construction person, it's more of an observer than it is, they don't give direction, they don't participate in any of the work. There really, a lot of people in the liability field have tried to change the name to observation instead of inspection, and instead of the word certify, to use the word I hear by state. So if you expect to have somebody like myself pay a person $70 an hour, then obviously my rate would have to be greater than $65 an hour, so that would need to be resolved if you were to consider my firm for providing inspection. But I do agree that in the report, I knew what the hours were, but I knew what was happening, and Mr. Lamone was inspecting at night. There was a lot of public projects, all the forest mains, and for instance, in the intersection of Wilson and Harbor, in the intersection of Victorian Harbor, being in the only surface road at South Coast Plaza. All of that required night work, and it was all around the same time. So that's just the way it was. Once again, those were good observations, and I appreciate the comments, and I will be more diligent in the future, whichever way it goes.
Mike?
Rob, in your letter, you had mentioned that Joe's retiring.
That's correct.
Can you tell us what your plan is to replace him?
I've already talked to one person who is an engineer, who might try to, for the position, and I could advertise and find retired people. It seems like, just as Mr. Murdock did, and Tom Banks at the city, Michael Avada at the city, they retire and then they seem to come back. So if you wanted to make the position 32 hours a week, 20 hours a week, I could certainly make that happen. I have more flexibility in that area than the district does, since I would be probably having an older person be interested in the position. I do like Val Vong, the person that Scott is referring to. He's a wonderful person, and he wants to be, I think he, I think he wants to be a project manager at the end of the day, and he needs lots of field experience. He came in here not knowing anything about sewer, so I do have training sessions with him every other week for an hour, and if you do go with him, he's a great person, and I would certainly try to resurrect items three, four, five, and six, so that they were being taken care of. Scott wrote a nice staff report. I have no problem if the district decides to hire its inspector, but we have to do some extra things that aren't being done if we're gonna make it work properly.
Which kind of generates a question, if I can, Jim, to Scott. Is there, I mean, the opportunity for a staff person to move up, I think anybody would agree, is a good thing for the organization. I mean, having the ability to elevate yourself is a good thing. The one thing that, bringing a new person in, and I think we've talked about this already, is we lose that institutional and historical knowledge that Rob's staff may have. Is there any way to do a partnership or to do a crossover where our employee, you know, we contract with Rob to train? I mean, is that a complicated issue?
Let me just, Rob has mentioned that he's gonna hire new persons. That person has no institutional knowledge either, so there's no difference. You got that issue. Second issue, Rob said he's not aware of prevailing wages. I'm looking at it right now, prevailing wage, I'll share this with Rob, prevailing wage for a construction inspector is $70.30 an hour, right there. Another issue I did not bring up, but could also address the accountability, is that, which I did mention in the staff report, is having a scheduling program for inspectors. A lot of cities and organizations do that, where the contractors have to go on the website, cities have a website, and they schedule the inspection. So they would say, okay, I'm ready for inspection, they go on this website, I'm ready for inspection. Someone from the city or the district would contact that contractor or inspector, okay, and set up that day and time to do the inspection. That way we would know how many inspections are out there, how long they're out there, there's a little more, better accountability to do that. There's some money you need to do that, that's identified in the staff report, if you're okay with that, we have to come back and appropriate the money. But that's one way to handle accountability. Yeah, so, you know, whatever you go with Rob or with Rob in house, it's still, you still have the institutional knowledge, because Joe's retired, you know, so.
If I may, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I, after listening to this and reading the information, I think it's important that our inspector stays with you out of your office to benefit the district in the long run. That could change down the road, but I think that's a position that we should take. I haven't ever talked to anybody about this, but I think that's my position.
Just as a reminder, this is, thank you for that. This is a study session, and the board can have us come back and provide more information or whatever, so chooses. But...
But we have to give direction, so my direction would be to continue with your organization running the inspection.
If we're gonna do that, I think we need to have Rob get back to staff... If we're going to do that, I, I think we need to have Rob get back to staff with how he's going to meet the requirements that Alan and Scott have come up with.
At least we give those directions.
Yeah.
To, to Scott and to Rob. I, I agree with you.
I think, I would like two alternatives. I'd like a proposal from, from Rob, meeting the prevailing wage, meeting the, the other requirements that you two have talked about. And then on the other side, for staff to, to give us that side on, on what it would be to do within house. But there, there's some pluses and minuses in both ways. I hate to lose, I hate to lose what we've got. I, I agree with you.
I'm basically agreeing with what Rob's saying.
Yeah.
Because he's the inspector.
I, I do have, I do believe that Mr. Lamone would participate in any training if it came down to that.
As far as the inspector goes, with your proposal, who would oversee the inspector? Would it be you or?
Me personally, yes.
And if we went the other way.
They would have, Scott would have to set up a schedule or something where we can make these things happen. Because we can't just send him out to field with a set of plans that he's, he's not an expert in reading plans.
It still has to be coordination with Rob's firms and with the district if you go in-house. I mean, that, it's, it has to be some sort of coordination.
As far as expense goes, that would be negotiated on one side. If you were still in charge, right?
Anything can be worked out.
Yeah, Rob, we, Rob would have to, we recommend Rob, if you want to go with Rob's firm, we recommend you resubmit a proposal, including prevailing wage, overhead, and all that stuff. And then we can bring that back to you if you're considering it.
Okay.
What is our, what is the, what is Val's present wage?
His present wage, it's in the staff report. Let me see. It's, um, give me a second. His current salary is, is it, is annual, $81,190,000 a year. That's, that's engineering technician.
Oh yeah, I see that now. Does, who would do his work if he became part-time or full-time inspector?
Well, that's, that, that is the thing, you know, we, we're, I'm taking the assumption that he can do both. Assuming that, that he can, if he can't do both, then he would be the inspector and then we have to hire a separate engineering technician.
It's simply a trade-off between the salary, his, his revised salary would be what we pay Rob's firm, if you'd have to replace. I, I don't think he'd do both personally. I think that would be tough. I think we'd have to lease somebody part-time to have a Val's working here. But I mean, that's all stuff I'm going to see projected out.
I agree with that.
When, when you do a simple project like the President's Pump Station, it almost required a full-time inspector.
Right.
And that means the other 130 permits and the other forest mains also need attention. And, and I've said this before, you get what you inspect, not what you expect. And these are big problems.
That's going under. When you die, that's going to be on your gray marker, I assume.
Marley, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. No, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And that is that, you know, experience is so important, I feel. And we've got somebody here who has a historical background from ye when. Whenever something comes up, he can go, yeah, I remember that. And some of us were with him then. And I was with him. And I think that it's so important to keep him and have him be able to, he's willing to do so many things for us and as well as training people. And, you know, that's priceless. I mean, to let that go would be ridiculous. So I feel almost like, well, I do feel like Art Phil. I just want to.
Well, I, I think there's some advantages to going with the in-house inspection program and the corporate knowledge, you know, as he worked with Rob. Rob, Rob said, you know, he, he was doing succession planning probably with a kid from Epo Beach. Who was also, you know, very qualified an engineer. I think we need to understand, you know, how long Rob's going to be doing this. And how we can, you know, keep that corporate knowledge, which potentially has some benefits, you know, by doing it in-house, working with Rob. Then, then whoever does the engineering in the future, be it outside consultant or inside engineer. I mean, there are pluses and minuses all over the place, every part of this.
Well, Chicago is important. People can shadow people and that makes everything.
Yeah, that can be done in-house or, or with Rob.
What do you need from us today?
Rob's going to do it no matter which way we go.
Just some direction, where, where you want to go. If you want to hire Rob's firm to continue for construction inspections, then direct, I recommend directing a revised proposal that includes prevailing wage. Also, maybe some more information on how he's going to supervise that inspector. Do you, also, do you want to have, do you want to have an online scheduling program for contractors? That, that could help. I think those are three issues I'm looking for as a direction to the board. Do you, or do you, do you still see value in an in-house inspector? We can budget that for 2020?
I would love to see Rob give his proposal, thanks that he mentioned earlier.
Could we please have Alan comment again on the necessity to pay prevailing wages to a construction inspector?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Would you like me to comment?
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
Whereas the city doesn't, apparently.
Yeah, a public agency that has an employee does not have to pay prevailing wages to that employee. They are not subject to the law. It's only people in the private industry that have to pay prevailing wages. And there's separate prevailing wage categories for inspector and construction managers. I assume there's a separate one for construction managers. It's called in the statute. So I assume that's a separate and probably higher category than inspector. So we would have to verify which, what the person, if we were to use Rob's firm, what that person's title would be and position would be. And then we'll have to figure out prevailing wages and then we'll have to make sure prevailing wage is paid. And that includes the overtime, but that would include the overtime for employee also. And we just have to work those details out, right? I think it's going to be more expensive. But it needs to be because of the law.
Well, I think all that information needs to be given to Rob.
Yeah, yes.
So he can prepare his proposal.
I, I would appreciate that.
I, I think for the, for the short term, that's the course of action we probably should take. And then if, if it's not acceptable, then we should move in a different direction.
When, when will this come back to us? The next board meeting or next month?
Whenever Rob ready, whenever he submits a proposal, we can, you know, we'd like to do a sit-down session.
I think you'll allow me to do some of that.
No, Mr. Moser has a comment.
Thank you once again, President Truman. My name is Jim Moser and I had, as a member of the public, I have two quick questions, which will undoubtedly reveal my complete ignorance of this subject, but I would hope that they could be clarified. One is, all the examples we're seeing in the staff report are examples of the district's own capital projects which are being inspected. As a member of the public, I am wondering if any of this discussion of inspection costs filters through to impacts on individual rate payers who may do some private sewer construction that needs to be inspected to see whether they're comprised with the standards of the district. I assume that happens. I don't know if this has any impact on that. And the second, the third question I have, in the inspection business, when we're talking about cost per hour, is there any possibility that somebody who charges more actually would cost less because they can do the job more efficiently in shorter hours? Or as we heard, is this something where somebody's being paid to stand their fixed number of hours? Or is this like an auto mechanic? Are, are these actual hours that we're charging for? And is the hours fixed in advance? Or is, is it like an auto mechanic who looks at a book and it says, break job takes 30 minutes? And he charges 30 minutes even if it only takes him 10? I'm curious about those questions. Thank you.
And one, one thing I'd just like to say, and that is, we don't, we don't want to see the same thing happen that had happened a while back.
Agreed.
With the oversight of, of your employee, we don't want that happening. And, and, you know, that's something that we've got to deal with internally ourselves and determine.
That's fine.
But it's, especially to the public, it seems totally excessive. They're ignorant in, in a way, but in a way you can't blame them, you know, so.
Out of the years in the study, all the years were very close to 2,000 and 80 hours except for one year. The, the other ones were not that far over. So, but point well taken. And I will do better. Thank you for that.
I think at this point, we want to give the staff direction to, or Rob's direction.
I, I would suggest as direction that we, that Alan or Scott sends me their information on prevailing wage. And let me review that.
Okay. We can present it at the next board meeting.
Right. I would like to see their schedule of prevailing wages that they have. And I'll do some checking on my own. And then I can revise my proposal. And then we can discuss that. If you would like it at the next board meeting, that's fine. Or if you would like to wait till the next study session so that we're not trying to get through it real fast, that would be fine too. I think Mr. Rao is doing a great job out there. And I met him yesterday at one of the jobs. So, and I've encouraged Val Wong to go out yesterday. And every time we have something of consequence, because I know that he needs that, whether he's the inspector or not. To be a plan checker and to understand sewer, you have to be in the field enough time to see it so that you understand, Alan Stone.
Marley?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I think we should put this aside till next study session in March. Because that would give enough time, I mean, for us to, this is so important to turn around and say, put it on the public agenda for next year.
Right. I think staff reports are due when, Alani?
The Tuesday before the meeting. So.
The Tuesday, the week before of the meeting. So that's like, well.
So he'd have plenty of time to get it all straight and everybody, did he have the information?
He'd have to make sure he gets all the information provided to him and then bring a proposal back. So that's a point.
This is extremely important.
I, I think that at the same time, you should perhaps ask Scott to figure out how it would work with me as district engineer and Val or some other person as inspector. So that we do have the corporate knowledge, continue on. We definitely don't want to lose that. So at the end of the day, it's what's right for the district.
Yeah, as far as financially, I mean, that will enter into our decision-making too.
Right.
What, what you're going to propose, you know, is it efficient?
Absolutely.
Is it covering the amount of ground we need to have covered? We, we need a motion for this?
No, we can't. Just a direction.
We, we'll do it. Okay. Staff has every direction. Okay, Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board of Directors. I think that went very well.
Okay, let's move along. CMSD 75th Anniversary Ad-Hoc Committee.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brother. Real quick, so the, the ad hoc committee that consists of Secretary Schaefer, Director Perry, Chairman of the CCC's Advisory Committee, Mike Carey, and Vice Chair, Al Graham. Graham, thank you, along with staff. And serving on this ad hoc committee, getting directions on how to celebrate our Sanitary District's anniversary this year. What we would like to show you today are four short video clips that the committee is recommending showing this at the movie theater at Triangle Square. So whenever you see a movie, before a movie starts, you can see these, these short little videos about the district. So I'm going to have.
Costa Mesa Sanitary District is celebrating 75 years of exceptional service. We want to continue protecting the environment by keeping bulky items off the streets and hazardous materials out of landfills. Our customers are eligible for free curbside pickups of large items like old furniture and appliances and household hazardous waste such as old electronics and paint. To schedule a pickup, call CRDR at 949-646-4617.
We'll do that again.
Sorry.
The Costa Mesa Sanitary District is celebrating 75 years of exceptional service. We want to continue protecting the environment by keeping bulky items off the streets and hazardous materials out of landfills. Our customers are eligible for free curbside pickups of large items like old furniture and appliances and household hazardous waste such as old electronics and paint. To schedule a pickup, call CRDR at 949-646-4617.
That's one of them. That's going to, what is that going to show?
Uh, I think it'll be this one.
Yeah, that one we should, we're going to show in this month. And then the next one we'll be showing is this one.
It'll be eight weeks.
Each one will be eight weeks?
Costa Mesa Sanitary District is celebrating 75 years of exceptional service. We partner with the OCC Recycling Center to collect used fluorescent light bulbs, household batteries, and electronics for safe disposal. Used cooking oil can be dropped off to be recycled into things like soap and candles. The OCC Recycling Center is open from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM daily and located on Adams Avenue between Harbor Boulevard and Fairview Road.
That's the second one. There's that third.
The Costa Mesa Sanitary District is celebrating 75 years of exceptional service. Our organics recycling program creates renewable resources and reduces the amount of waste sent to landfills. District customers can place landscaping waste, such as grass and leaves, into the organics cart along with food scraps and used cooking oil. It's then taken to a state-of-the-art anaerobic digestion facility and recycled into natural gas that fuels your trash trucks.
Nice pictures of rotten food. Hopefully they're not eating popcorn when they look at that.
Oh.
So, it's before the movie.
The Costa Mesa Sanitary District is celebrating 75 years of exceptional service. We want to help you prevent sewer backups that can result in costly damages to your home and sewer spills that pollute our environment. Apply for our sewer inspection rebate program to get rebates of up to $250 for closed-circuit television or $500 to install a ground-level cleanout. Visit cmstdca.gov or call 949-645-8400 for more information.
So that's it. We'll have those throughout the year at the movie theater at Triangle Square. We'll also have that available on our website. I want to thank Gina and Avila for collaborating and working with the bigger, put that together. Turned out, I think, very nice, very well done. The committees also work on giving promotional giveaways. And so we have some promotional giveaways that I think we're in a process of acquiring and getting some more information. So we'll be giving those out at special events, committee events. So, go along with it. Did I miss anything?
You'd be proud of us. We did the job.
I, I think it's great.
Let us coordinate with our timetable for other committees.
Our budget.
Would it be rude for us to ask for donations from the people, CR and R, and the people that are involved in this?
Well, they're going to do the banner.
If you do the asking.
On our trucks.
I like your psyche, I mean, promoting CR and R, maybe they could help with some of the budget.
Well, they give us, that's what I'm saying. They give us like $10,000. They do give us money for donations.
But you'll see the same signature on all the different trucks going around.
Doesn't hurt to ask, you know, you don't know until you ask.
And then we're talking about a banner, two banners.
And we have a number of items that we're going to provide for the yard and for here, advertising the 75th anniversary, plus we're going to have, it's not a shirt for the board, but it's going to be a...
It's a camp shirt, it's similar to what you have already, those black shirts with the collars, just with the 75th logo.
I think it'll be black?
Yes.
That's what you require.
Could it be green?
What's the total budget for this, fifteen?
Fifteen for the remainder of the year.
Fifteen for the year, then it'll be ten for the next fiscal year, so twenty-five.
Can we just bring a black shirt in and have a patch put on it?
Everyone, don't do that.
I don't have enough room in my closet, so...
Gina, what's... Okay, I thought, just one second, Jim, wasn't the staff shirt, I mean, the shirt was going to go to the CAC, and we were going to get something different? Or it was going to...
The CAC is going to get the fleece. The CAC, I think, was going to have the... No, the board was going to get the fleece.
That's right, we were going to get the fleece, and the CAC was going to get the staff shirt.
The camp shirt.
What are we getting? We're getting fleece? Do they hear the radio?
It's a fleece jacket, but we can give you options.
No, I like that.
It's different before we got the radio, that's why I didn't want that.
I'll show you the one SDR makes us. Show them, you guys don't need to worry about it.
Okay, let's move along to oral communications, director comments.
One thing, Alan, I appreciate the note that we got last week about our, our SSO situation. Have we now moved to the point where we're just, we're paying it, we're going to be done with it?
Unless the board asks for a closed session to discuss it further.
Okay, but the plan, I mean, based on the memo you gave us, it's time to move forward. It just ended, right?
I shared an attorney-client confidential communication with you, and if you'd like to discuss it in a closed session, if you'd like to go public, that would be fine too, but that's your choice to weigh with your attorney-client privilege.
Thank you, I will shut my mouth then. Marley?
I have a memo here from the ISOC Ad-Hoc Committee regarding the LAFCO news appointment, and I have to respond to it, and I have to know how you feel, you know, between Director Schaefer and me. We've been trying to keep you abreast of what's going on, how, some of it has been kind of unfair, we've heard from one of the districts that they feel, why are we doing Irvine the same as us? Why are we doing certain districts that have actually the same amount, and they should be upping it more for them and less for us type? So I have to go back to them, and I don't want to do it on my own without saying, you know, what we really feel.
My idea is that we allow Mr. Nederhude, or Nederhude from Yorba Linda. I think they need to look at the proposal again. I think what was presented before was really shoved at us. When Fisker did his Ad-Hoc Committee, it consisted of him and Irvine Ranch, some people that would be hurt, MODOC, that would be hurt by the keeping things the way they are. So I, my recommendation to ISOC would be that, let's have all the districts look at it again and decide how they want to advise LAFCO.
Mr. President, if I may, if I stepped over my boundaries, please let me know, but I did, I did relay to Paul Affairs, our consultant that handles this kind of stuff, and goes to LAFCO meetings, I told him our position was that we would support reviewing the fee structure again, that our, I think we paid twenty, was it, again, $26,000 a year, which is equivalent to the same as the much larger organizations, and we think that's unfair, so we would, we would agree with Yorba Linda Water District that the fee structure has to be looked at again. So we already, we already told, and that we're going to relay that to, I already told Public Affairs, he was going to relay that to ISOC, so...
I'm glad you're there. Interestingly enough, yesterday I got a voicemail from the Chair of ISOC, Sandra Jacobs, asking for some input, and I would just as soon have gone, the way Scott's already done it.
Yeah, that's a fair way.
Yeah, that is very good.
Is the proposal revenue neutral? So RP would go down and the larger agencies would go up?
They're looking at, I guess, revenue, a revenue proposal, a budgetary, they want to tie LAFCO news to the budgetary process of each district.
But LAFCO, is this, is this coming from LAFCO?
No. This is coming from Yorba Linda, because last year there was a proposal that was brought to ISOC, and essentially ISOC said, could take the Mesa Water proposal, which was to leave things the way they were. Whereas Yorba Linda is saying, you're missing a point there. I mean, the smaller districts are paying an extraordinary amount as opposed to the bigger districts.
Does LAFCO not need any more revenue out of this?
I don't think they're going to get any more revenue, they're just going to reapportion it, and I get more of an equitable situation.
So the smaller agencies' fees would go down and the larger agencies would go up? Do they know how much they would want?
Yeah, they do, and it's, when you look at Irvine Ranch and MODOC and North County Water District, it's significant, I mean...
Significant means what?
Oh, they're going to go from $26,000 to $140,000.
Oh, wow. It's significant.
I remember the numbers right.
Yeah, I haven't seen the numbers, I don't know.
The numbers are out there, you can get them.
So, actually, I've got direction now for the next ISOC meeting.
Any other communications from the board? Not this meeting, is now adjourned.